To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Campbell, let the record reflect that Mr. Logue and I are both here, and I would like to move that Mr. Dills has an excused absence.
Second.
Second.
Great. So for discussion, Mr. Dills is in the Air Force. He is, I think he's in Georgia. He's someplace, wearing the uniform, serving our country. He's in the Air Force Reserves, and we thank him for his service and wish him well.
Roll call?
Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Approval of minutes. The business meeting minutes from April 11th, move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Campbell?
Roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Move to approve the zoning hearing minutes from April 11th.
So, second.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Move to approve the work session minutes from April 25th.
Second.
Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell, are there any correspondence?
Yes, sir, I have one. It is a liquor permit, and this one happens to be a transfer of ownership. So it's Civic Incorporated doing business at Cherry Grove Gas Station, 533 Ohio Pike, Union Township, Cincinnati, Ohio 45255. That's transferred to Ashwin, A-S-H-W-I-N, LLC, 533 Ohio Pike, Union Township, Cincinnati, Ohio 45255. Police Department has no objections, and I've got the corresponding documentation from Mr. Floudy that all the zoning is proper. That concludes my communications.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much. Okay, so we got the proclamations, special presentations. Is Chad Lutz in here?
Yes.
Chad, come on up. Yeah, Mr. Lutz, you and I served, I don't know if I say served together, rode together on a, this was back during the, when I was in the Citizens Police Academy.
Yes, sir.
And that was, we got to know each other. It was a, it was a good ride. If I remember correctly, you bought me dinner at Perkins.
Yes.
That particular night. That was awesome. Appreciate it. We have a recognition award for you for 25 years, and when I was running for state representative, I think I worked your neighborhood. Did I knock on your door? Do you remember?
Yes, sir.
I did?
Yes.
Okay. It's a small world, isn't it?
Yes.
You still live in the same place?
Yes.
I do remember where it was. All right. Say also Scott Musselman. Are you in here, please? Come on up. Mr. Musselman, we got a five-year award for you as well in the fire department. Any stories to tell?
Lots.
Two minutes.
Smart man keeps his mouth shut.
Mr. Logue, anything for either one of them?
We just appreciate your service to the community so much, 25 years and five years. And, you know, we want you to stay around for a while longer with us, and want you to stay around a much long while for us. So, hopefully we can continue to create a great, great culture and environment for you to be here. But this community loves you and appreciates you, and thanks you so much. So, absolutely. So, thank you.
That's great. So we're gonna give you these, these awards for your length of service and also get a picture with the elected officials and two of you together, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Actually, I'm having problems with my microphone. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here today.
Okay, now we're gonna do public comments. There's these comment cards that are in the back of the room, if anybody would like to do public comment. Now, what we're not gonna be doing tonight is any of the hearings. I know there was a lot of concern about a plan development for Evans and also a plan development or rezoning for Bellevue, Belleville Apartments. So we're not gonna be hearing those tonight, but we're still gonna accept comments on really anything that we want to talk about. So I only have one this evening. Is there anybody else? No, that'll be it. Okay, Brenda Vega, come on up.
Hi, I'm Brenda Vega. I'm your swan lady. I reside at 54 Apple Lane, Union Township. And I'm just here tonight to give you an update on the swans, and I have great news that Sunday night in the glow of a magical moon, our five eggs hatched at the cemetery. So we have five new signets there. Hopefully we can keep them safe from people and predators, especially the two-legged kind. And so everything's just going beautifully there. It's well-maintained. Our veterans park, of all places, we have a nest with four eggs in it. I'm hoping they'll hatch soon. They might surprise us. You never know. I mean, as much as a struggle and strife as we've had with that pond over the past six years, I think that this might be something that's miraculous. You know, nature has its way of keeping on, you know? And plus, also, the TQL thing is going well. It's progressing rapidly. And so, and the automatic feeders weren't working great. Some days I do go over and notice if I call to them and they come up to me, then I know I just throw some grain over the fence, you know, because they missed out or whatever. But we do have three mandarins that did return to TQL. So some of our mandarin wood ducks still are, they're running amok in the neighborhood. So it's all good. So that's all I wanted to say. And I want to thank you for continuing to let me take care of these beautiful creatures, and I look forward to it much in the future.
Thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update. Okay, last chance for anybody else. Okay, closing out the public comment. Personnel actions. I'd like to confirm the appointment for Matt Walker for patrol officer. Chief Reese, any comments?
Yes, sir.
Introduce Mr. Walker, please.
Thank you. I'd like to present tonight Matt Walker to the board for the position of police officer for Union Township. Mr. Walker is a resident of Miami Township, Claremont County, and a 2011 graduate of Ohio University, where he earned his bachelor's and science degree in communications. He received his OPADA police officer certification from Great Oaks Police Academy in 2012. Mr. Walker served one year as a corrections officer for the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office. He comes to us by way of Goshen Township Police Department, where he has served as a full-time police officer since 2017. Mr. Walker successfully completed all pre-employment phases for the position of police officer, including background, polygraph, and psychological examinations. I am requesting the board appoint Matt Walker to the position of police officer in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement and pending successful completion of a physical examination. Mr. Walker's start date is scheduled for June 1st, 2023.
Thank you, Chief. I will make the motion to confirm Matt Walker.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Mr. Logue?
Is your family here with you tonight?
Yes, sir.
Can you point them out?
Yeah, there's my sister on the end, my brother-in-law David, my sister-in-law Molly, my wife Laura, my in-laws, good friends, Jen and Mark, and my daughter's out in the hallway. Caroline, I think she was...
I was hoping that was her. I was like, bring her in, bring her in.
She's being a little vocal.
We like that.
Well, you've got a beautiful family. You all must be so proud. Excited to have you here, and thank you for choosing Union Township, and just excited to have you get started and welcome your family to the community. So the whole family serves together, and God bless you. And seriously, you can bring that little daughter in here. I got a one-year-old at home, you know, so I got a five, three, and one-year-old. So, you know, the toddler years are fun, and plenty of stories there. Plenty of stories. Do you have other, is that your first?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, awesome. So you were in Goshen?
Yes, sir.
Goshen's a great community. You know, I represented that when I was a state representative, and yeah, awesome place. Really, really enjoyed being out in Goshen and great people out there. So, boy, it sounds like it's a real win for us and a loss for them to get you here. They got a great police department out there.
Had a great time working there.
All right, very good. Okay, so that's all I have. Roll call, please.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Chief Reese, tell us about Cameron Moran.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. I'd also like to tonight present Mr. Cameron Moran to the board for the position of police officer for Union Township. Mr. Moran is a resident of Hillsborough, Ohio, and a 2016 graduate of the Southern State Community College, where he earned his associate's degree in business. He received his OPADA police officer certification from the University of Cincinnati Police Academy in 2019. Mr. Moran served as a part-time police officer for the villages of Aberdeen and New Richmond. Mr. Moran comes to us from the Brown County Sheriff's Office, where he's served as a road patrol deputy since 2020. Mr. Moran has successfully completed all pre-employment phases for the position of police officer, including background, polygraph, and psychological examinations. I'm requesting the board appoint Cameron Moran to the position of police officer in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement and pending successful completion of a physical examination. Mr. Moran's start date is also scheduled for June 1st, 2023.
Thank you, Chief Reese. I will make the motion to appoint Cameron Moran to the position of patrol officer.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Logue.
Likewise, is your family with you tonight?
Yeah, third row back. My wife, my mom, Michelle, my stepdad David, and my sister David.
Wonderful.
No kids yet, so.
All right. All right. It's all right. Welcome, you know, again, the whole family serves to thank you, and coming from Brown County Sheriff's Department. So, and the Sheriff's Department has a broad mission set, and Union Township here, we've got a higher rate of calls for service. And, you know, I don't know how, how your perspective is in Brown, but we welcome you here, Union Township, and, you know, for both of you, you know, be ready to get running and be busy, and hopefully not too much running, figuratively. So, but thank you. Thank you for choosing us, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Brown County. Yeah, I've been out there a few times as well. You'll find the Claremont County Jail works a lot better than the Brown County Jail. Did they ever get that fixed out there? I mean, the doors were falling off the hinges? I mean, crazy stuff going on? Better now?
A little better.
Little bit better. You live in Hillsborough, is that right?
I do, sir.
Who, you used to have a mayor out there that was, I'll just say, different?
We just moved out there probably a year and a half ago, so I'm...
Okay. And I can't remember the guy's name, but he was comedian or something. He was, if I'm remembering correctly, was he mayor of Hillsborough? You don't even know who I'm talking to.
No, no, I was just, I was just gonna be positive.
We're trying to get him to move closer.
Yeah, I think, I don't know, I think there was some, something went on. He wound up moving on. I don't remember all the details. And since you're new, you probably don't know either.
No, I do not, sir.
New to Hillsborough. Where were you before Hillsborough?
I lived in Ripley.
Ripley, okay, great. Well, you're still from this area, anyway.
Yes, sir.
I tried to discuss the wonderful Union Township housing options if they wanted to relocate a little closer.
Right. The housing's probably a lot cheaper out there, better value.
Yeah.
I love rural, rural communities. Okay, anything else? Mr. Cameron, roll call, please.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Department reports. Chief Daimling, what do you got for us?
Thank you. Before we get rolling with that, can we invite the families and the new hires up for photos?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can. Thank you for that.
Let's do, yeah, you guys step over.
Oh, one at a time.
See, we scooted over to avoid that.
See, we scooted over to avoid that.
All right, Chief Daimling.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. For the month of April, the department made five, I'm sorry, 215 fire and emergency service calls, 511 emergency medical responses. They consisted of 515 total patients seen. The department completed 1,477 hours of training, were involved in 20 public education details. We had 131 hours of EMT, paramedic ride-along time, and we completed 190 fire safety inspections within the township, and that concludes my report.
All right. Mr. Logue, any questions?
No. Thank you very much, Chief.
I do. So on your report, you have, you have a 35 firefighter, paramedics, and you got one firefighter EMT. What is the difference between a paramedic and an EMT?
Well, the difference is in, in their level of training, their scope of practice. The state of Ohio, the Ohio Department of Public Safety defines scope of practice of your emergency medical service providers. And the EMT is approximately 150 hours of training. Your paramedic level certification is closer to 1,500, or maybe even over 1,500 hours of training, depending on which paramedic program you go through. So when we're talking about scope of practice, it's what level of service they can provide. Your EMT can provide what we define as a basic life support. Your paramedic is provide advanced life support, so they're capable of doing, you know, 12 lead cardiac monitoring, transcutaneous pacing, synchronized cardioversion, administering drugs, advanced airways, definitive airways like intracure innovation. It's a, they provide advanced life support where EMTs provide a basic life support.
Okay. Will the EMT eventually get to the level of a paramedic?
They will not. They will retire this year.
Ah, I understand. Okay. All right. Police Department report. Chief Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Becker. In the month of April, the Communications Center handled 4,958 calls for service for police, fire, and EMS, and 5,383 total calls. The clerks also processed 460 pieces of juvenile and adult court-related paperwork for the courts, processed 81 court notices for the officers' personal appearances that are required in court, processed 11 Rule 16s for the prosecutor's office, and handled 160 public records requests. In the area of public affairs, officers conducted three public relations events in the month of April, including a canine demonstration at the American Legion. We also participated, our Citizen Academy volunteers and our officers, in a paper shred and prescription drug drop-off in conjunction with Crime Stoppers at Furniture Fair. And I might add, made an appearance at that, we took in over 100 pounds of prescription drugs off the streets. So it was a very productive day. We also, officers also conducted a fingerprint demonstration and gun safety talk in St. Thomas Moore Grade School. Our honor guard participated in the Mount Mop and Yellow Ribbon Event, which is an annual event that they hold every April at the Oasis in Love. The Operations Bureau, our officers took 318 incident reports, 106 crash reports, made 680 traffic stops, wrote 162 citations, issued 547 written warnings, made 146 criminal arrests, 104 traffic arrests, and served 109 warrants. In the month of April, officers attended 128 total hours of training, and fuel costs for the month were $12,900 with 45,767 miles driven by our police officers. And that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Reese. Mr. Logue, any comments, questions?
No. Thank you very much, Chief.
Not either. Great. Thank you. All right. Mr. Taylor, Services Department report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. In the Cemetery Division, from April 1st through the 30th, 16 burials were performed, generating $9,500. 20 resident graves were purchased, generating $11,000. Two non-resident graves were purchased, generating $3,000. And four columbarium niches were purchased, generating $5,900. The total amount generated for the period was $35,094.60. Junk days were held, April 17th through the 22nd. A total of 11 packer trucks, 24 30-yard dumpsters, and 42 refrigerators were collected. And a total of work, a total of 50 work orders were completed on 43 township roads. And in the Parks Division, first-ever movie night was held at, on April 29th at Clepper Park. And Adam Davison, he is one of the maintenance workers. He passed his Certified Playground Safety Inspector certificate through the National Parks and Recreation Association. And staff is currently munching in the landscape pits. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Logue, any comments, questions?
No. Not this time. Appreciate the work, Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, hey, update us on the junk days. So was anything, I don't know, unusual, routine? Was anything jump out at you for junk days this year?
There were four sea dews and a boat.
Four sea dews and a boat? Was all from the same person?
No. Two different people.
Two different people?
Yeah.
Four sea dews and a boat?
Yeah. That was probably about the most extreme. That's the second boat I've seen actually come in. The motor was gone, or the outdrive was gone, and they just, they didn't want it anymore, I guess.
Were all of them on trailers?
Yeah.
So the trailers, the boats, the sea dews, all of it went in your dumpsters somehow?
We'll take, we'll take the metal and turn it into recycling for the trailer, and the boat will just get crushed.
That's amazing.
Yeah. Yeah. It was, yeah, Mr. Logue has a picture of it.
I've got a picture of the boat for you, Mr. Becker. My, my wife...
The Operations Bureau, our officers took 318 incident reports, 106 crash reports, made 680 traffic stops, wrote 162 citations, issued 547 written warnings, made 146 criminal arrests, 104 traffic arrests, and served 109 warrants. In the month of April, officers attended 128 total hours of training. And fuel costs for the month were $12,900 with 45,767 miles driven by our police officers. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you, Mr. Reese. Mr. Logue, any comments, questions?
No, thank you very much, Chief.
You're not either, great, thank you. All right. Mr. Taylor, Services Department report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. In the Cemetery Division, from April 1st through the 30th, 16 burials were performed, generating $9,500. 20 resident graves were purchased, generating $11,000. Two non-resident graves were purchased, generating $3,000. And four columbarium niches were purchased, generating $5,900. The total amount generated for the period was $35,094.60. Junk days were held, April 17th through the 22nd. A total of 11 packer trucks, 24 30-yard dumpsters, and 42 refrigerators were collected. And a total of work, a total of 50 work orders were completed on 43 township roads. And in the Parks Division, first ever movie night was held at, on April 29th at Klepper Park. And Adam Davison, he is one of the maintenance workers. He passed his Certified Playground Safety Inspector certificate through the National Parks and Recreation Association. And staff is currently munching the landscape bits. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Logue, any comments, questions?
No, not this time. Appreciate the work, Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, hey, update us on the junk days. So was anything, I don't know, unusual, routine? Was anything jump out at you for junk days this year?
There were four CDOs and a boat.
Four CDOs and a boat? Was all from the same person?
No, two different people.
Two different people? And four CDOs and a boat?
Yeah, that was probably about the most extreme. That's the second boat I've seen actually come in. The motor was gone, or the outdrive was gone, and they just, they didn't want it anymore, I guess.
Were all of them on trailers?
Yeah.
So the trailers, the boats, the CDOs, all of it went in your dumpsters somehow?
We'll take the metal and turn it into recycling for the trailer, and the boat will just get crushed.
That's amazing.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, yeah, Mr. Logue has a picture of it.
I've got a picture of the boat for you, Mr. Becker. My wife, my wife was wanting to get the kids out and pick up litter, litter at the park. So we were at Veterans Park picking up litter, and then we swung by to check on everyone there, and we saw the boat, and I took a picture.
Wait, this boat went, it looks like a nice boat!
I walked up to it and poked my head in. Little different story once you get a little closer.
It's a different, different outlook. It was busy. You know, traffic on Saturday, I think, was backed up to Veterans Park. So, I mean, it was extremely busy. But the guys did a great job, so.
All right, so with the cemetery, I think you're working on a proposal, give us an update on that, having to do with repricing or comparing kind of market prices data on grave sites?
Yes, Ms. Ayers and I are still working on getting some, obviously, numbers together, and we should have something for you in the August meeting.
I anticipated sometime in August for the work session to discuss fees in general and specifically what the situation is at the cemetery.
August work session?
August work session.
Works for me. Okay, very good. Mr. McCormick, planning and zoning, what do you got for us?
Thank you. For the month of April, we had 61 inspections, seven complaints, three unbounded complaints, four warning citations, two 15-day non-compliance letters, one 30-day violation letter, five cases resolved, 430 illegal signs removed, 11, or 13 miscellaneous issues, seven monthly violations, seven reinspection violations, and one nuisance. As far as permit activity, we had two, seven changes of use, 12 signs, one temporary sign, 12 single-family dwelling units, two multifamily dwellings that amounted to 19 dwelling units, four additions, two decks, seven accessory permits, 14 permits for pools and fences, for a total of 78 permits, with the total revenue being $16,546. And for the month of April, we also collected $350 for the fire department permit revenue. That concludes my report.
Great, thank you. Mr. Logue, questions, comments?
I'll just comment for Mr. McCormick and Ms. Ayers. Since, the illegal signs removed, I'd like for staff to take a look at what research on realtor signs, resident brought an issue to my attention that their real estate sign was, if it's private property or in the right of way, but it was removed. The real discrepancy that I see is the fact that there was another realtor sign across the street. And I know if it's contingent on it has the property address or if it just has the real estate agent's website and how we are equally treating businesses when we're removing illegal signs for businesses. And does real estate always fall, you know, what are some other practices that are being utilized? Because I think it can become burdensome or difficult if now, because we have increased the sign enforcement. I know that that's a dramatic change from last year where we had a record amount of illegal signs, and we did not hear from any realtors last year, but into this year, I've heard from realtor. And I know that, like it stated, it provides a area for research just for equal, you know, application of the enforcement for all businesses. But is there anything that's different with real estate and advertising a home for sale? Because I think overall for the township, it's good to allow that advertisement to occur. And I'm not trying to pick and choose there, but I'm saying from the sense of home sales values and being able to be sold fast, and obviously the signs help drive that. So just, just please research into it. And to me, I feel like there's a common, common sense approach, or there should be a common sense solution. I just, I fundamentally view the advertisement of a real estate sign more or less different than the sign complaints that we've received from residents in the past that were a lot of vinyl signs that are placed all over the place just to advertise a very specific seasonal business. And that's, to me, is the differentiator. So I, I don't know if the solution will be there, but just want to highlight that to the staff and ask you to take a look at it, so thank you.
Yeah, Mr. McCormick, I concur with Mr. Logue on that. I guess I assumed, or maybe we need to do a policy on this, we can discuss it when Mr. Dills is back, that signs of a temporary nature would be kind of exempt from the people picking up signs. So temporary, I'm thinking real estate signs, garage sale, you know, those sorts of things, as opposed to, you know, deck cleaning, house washing, those kinds of signs you're seeing all over the place on a regular basis. And, and, and ones of a temporary nature, at least those two examples, they're kind of isolated. Well, real estate signs you're going to find, I guess, you know, wherever there's a house for sale, but it's not like it's going to be on every corner, unlike some of the other signs that we saw. So that's a good point, Mr. Logue, thank you. Also, I wanted to ask you about the trend in the illegal signs removed. There was, it had been going down from January, it was 300, February is 200, March was 100, these are all round numbers, April 430. So there were the four greater than, fourfold increase sign removals from April to March. For all those real estate signs? Or what, is there, was there a reason that it had such an uptick? It just seems like a peculiar trend.
So I think it's just a combination of things. When I looked at last year's report, April was the second highest month that we had for signs being picked up. So I think it's a combination of the weather getting nicer, the, you know, maybe the time that the person that goes out and does the inspection is a factor, especially from March of this year to April. But, and there is some better coordination between the zoning inspector and the gentleman that picks up the signs. But there didn't seem to be a single factor. I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that it's just that time of the year where a lot of signs get put out. I mean, very well, that's almost exactly the same number as what we had last year. It's within 30-something signs of being the same.
You know, I am pleased with the work that they've been doing. It's, I guess now when I'm seeing an illegal sign, it's more the exception than the rule. So that's good, they're on top of it. Okay, Ms. Ayers, Administrator report.
Thank you, sir. Open checkbook shows open through April the 30th. We have seen construction start on the Glen Estee campus development. So we've been working through them with some access issues, making sure the site's being maintained properly. We have had presentations and bids on improvements at the park for pickleball courts and new playground equipment. I know we had some questions last time about the cost of playground equipment. So Mr. Taylor and I have been working to look at other sources to see if there's any other bids that we can evaluate out there. We should have that together for a June vote. People have continued to ask questions about electric aggregation, planning for a June 1st start on that. Duke advertised finally their generation rate for June 1st. It is a little over 10 cents per kilowatt hour. Electric aggregation comparatively was in the 6.5 range. So we anticipate that will result in savings for residents. Again, if people choose to opt out, they certainly can do that through our website that links to the energy aggregation partner. Web design with Civic Plus is continuing. Today, we had our first day of training for the staff that will be working on maintaining the site. There are four network administrators and then a collection of people from each department to help take the training and then do updating for individual pages for each department. We are shooting to have that up and running next week, depending on how the training finishes this week. Hopefully, we will be able to make that happen. I've been very pleased with how the site looks. I think people, once they see it, are going to get a good feel and a good ability to look at the most requested information as easy as possible. So we're looking forward to debuting that. We have continued work with Miguel Smith Punchin on the East Gate Mall redevelopment planning. Had a kickoff meeting this week with them, as well as some conversations. They are reaching out to mall owners and some business owners in the marketplace to start their economic development analysis, and that continues to work well. Wanted to bring up, I know there's been some concerns about the newsletter. I share some frustration. At the last meeting, we discussed that we believed there, the addition would be in the mailbox within 10 days. I apparently got some bad information from the printer. So we have literally spent the last month going back and forth with the printing company, trying to get this moving. It has been frustrating, to say the least. I'm sure it is frustrating for the trustees as well as residents. The best I can do was to indicate at this point that we've continued to have contact with the printers about daily for the past few weeks, trying to get something organized. And I anticipate we will have some conversations tough moving forward about what the best way to get this out is and the potential, looking at some other sources for getting this to print, because this delay has been unacceptable up to this point in time. We also had some conversations, the two zoning cases that were supposed to be heard tonight, both applicants requested that those matters be moved to June. So we are working with them to get a new date. With the amount, luckily, we have a lot going on. And the downside of that is I do anticipate there being a significant number of zoning hearings in the June timeframe. So I'm working on getting a special meeting date set up with the intention that we would hear the zoning cases during a special meeting in order to get those efficiently processed with the rest of our business. Still working on a couple of dates, I know we've had some conflicts. So hopefully, people will stick with us and we'll get those out here in the next week or so. Let's see, what else do we have? June, we will also have a work session. I'd like at that time, if the board would like, to discuss ARPA and some of the feedback we solicited through the community survey. The idea being, we discussed in April what some of the priorities for the board was. In June, we can discuss what we believe some of the priorities for the community are and then discuss with some of the funds that we have left from ARPA, what do we think the best uses of those are? So I anticipate that coming at the June news, the June work session. And I will discuss in a bit my last topic for summer events. That is all I have at this time.
Mr. Logue?
Ms. Ayers, hey, thanks for the update. Thanks for diligently working with the newsletter printer. It's an old vendor, and they do not want to deliver newsletters to our community on time, as scheduled and as the staff has requested. I have no problem having a new vendor take over printing. That's completely unacceptable and it's unprofessional. So, so thank you for carrying that forward. Let's get it moved forward, and we'll find a new vendor as soon as possible for the next scheduled delivery.
Okay, yeah, I concur with Mr. Logue on that as well. And, you know, I don't know if we called the first one or the second one, it still hasn't been in. Put out, you had quarterly, we should probably start calling this seasonal, maybe only do three this year. And, yeah, the problem with this is, as far as I can tell, the problem is not in this building. And, yeah, we will be making changes. Really looking forward to the new website coming out. Because a lot of people hate the old one. And because, and it's gotten worse because we're not wanting to maintain it because we got this new one on the horizon. So it's just, looking forward to that clean sweep and just starting over and...
Me as well. It's going to be a lot easier to maintain on the backend too, so we're looking forward to it.
If I may add on that?
Yes, you may, go ahead.
For the residents, yeah, being able to see a sneak peek of the overall structure, it's just, it's incredible to be able to really feel and see transparency, accountability, communication, and being able to search documents and see them come up and not have to go through the blue folders and the blue folders. And if you've been on the website and you've ducked through, and you get to the wrong blue folder, you start the whole process all over again, like a sick trick. There's no back button that works on the current website. So really, really looking forward to the impact that this can have to really move our township forward in a professional way and utilize the technology that's out there. So thanks to the staff for working diligently with this and, you know, going through a competitive source selection process and identifying, you know, a leading government website platform to deliver and connect us better with the residents, so just thank you.
All right, very good. All right, old business, the 2023 Summer Events Calendar, Ms. Ayers.
Thanks, sir. We've continued to have some conversations about summer events. I wanted to highlight this again. Did have our first movie night. The weather was a little chilly, but we did have a nice turnout, and I was really pleased with the way it turned out. We're working on focusing on showcasing as many of our public spaces that are available as possible. Just a couple to highlight coming up. May 20th is a family catch and release fishing tournament at Klepper Park. I've been shocked how many people didn't realize we have a stock fishing pond at Klepper, and so we're excited to focus on that. The Parks and Recreation Commission has been working and will continue to work on helping us with that event and getting it organized. May 27th, we're going to have our first concert in the amphitheater this year for the Blue Water Kings Band, whose lead singer is actually a Union Township resident, so we're excited about that. June 10th, concert by Tom the Torpedoes, who doing the music of Tom Petty, I believe, were popular last year. June 17th, we're going to be having another movie night for the DC League of Superhero Pets. I am jokingly calling this the Union Township Superhero Pet Night as well. The Police Canine Unit is going to be there prior to the movie to do a demonstration. We have a lot of great working animals, and we're looking forward to celebrating those along with the superhero pets in the movie. Working with Snow Cone Truck, I know the Kona Ice Truck was very popular at the last movie night with all the children. Working on food trucks coming. The First Farmers Market's going to be June the 9th. We're hoping we're going to have some produce available at that time. If not, there's going to be lots of other baked goods and things to purchase. But I'm looking forward to starting that back up June 9th here at the Civic Center. One of the things I think have been a great example of community pride this year is that a lot of our partners are working with us on these events. Sportsman's Warehouse is helping to sponsor the fishing tournament for residents that may not have access to children's fishing equipment. They're going to be donating some and working with us on that event. The police department's volunteered to come in and do the demonstration with our canine units for the DC Superhero Pets movie. The Claremont County Library has stepped up and is sponsoring a children's concert by Zack Morgan. And they're also going to be doing some crafts and push of library services around the Harry Potter movie in July. Cincinnati Playwright Initiative is sponsoring a free play reading here at the Civic Center, or at the amphitheater to get their word out and put on event for the community. The Parks and Recreation Committee's been working diligently on the fishing tournament, and they'll be working on the pickleball tournament. Jungle Gyms continues to help us sponsor and work on our end-of-summer fireworks. The Crossroads Church continues to work on our end-of-summer fireworks. So I just wanted to take a minute to highlight all of our great community partners that have really been stepping up and trying to help enhance these activities for the community. It's been really fun getting to put this together with everybody. And I thank all of those folks for stepping up to the plate and highlighting what kind of cool partnerships we have in town. Here's some schedules for you. June, and these are all up on our website under Recreation, Community Events, so if people want to go check them out. They're done by month, just to give people a little bit of a calendar to organize. June, we're going to have the concert, the movie and the canine demo, and then Top Gun Maverick movie. July, we're going to have Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory. That happens to be very close to World Chocolate Day. So of course you have to have Willy Wonka to show for the families. Also, my husband's favorite movie, so he's very excited. The 15th, we're going to have a concert with the Second Wind Band. The 22nd, the pickleball tournament. We're working at Veterans Park because we're not exactly sure when we're going to finish with the new courts at Klepper. And then the 29th, we're going to be showing Harry Potter and the Chamber of Secrets. That is the weekend of Harry Potter's birthday for your Harry Potter aficionados. So, and the library's going to come out and do some crafts with families that want to participate before the movie. August 3rd, we're going to have National Night Out with the police department, doing a great job. The 9th, the library is sponsoring a children's concert by Zack Morgan at the amphitheater. The 12th, we're going to have Casino Players Band here at the amphitheater. The 19th will be a play with Cincinnati Shakespeare Festival, the Comedy of Errors. August 26th, we are bringing back the end-of-summer fireworks, putting it a little earlier in the year this year, hopefully hits more crowds. Then September 9th, we'll have the Cars movie at Klepper Park and then lantern lighting put on by the Service Department. Again, all of this will be on our website at the Recreation and Township Events page, but we're looking forward to pressing this out and seeing people out and about this summer. That's all I have.
Mr. Logue, comments, questions?
Thank you very much, Ms. Ayers. It's a great, fresh perspective on how to engage in the community, showcase the resources and the taxpayer resources here within the community, and highlight our community partners, and also target different members throughout our community. So I think that that's just great. So thanks for the staff for working on that and starting this direction for the first time in Union Township's recent history for those recalling last year, years prior. Traditionally, it's a Saturday night music at the amphitheater. So that's why this is a little different moving forward. But I feel very strongly that, again, be a broader ability to connect with more of our community. So, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I love the, what you're doing with this summer event. I, it, you know, shakes things up from what we've done in the past. Not that there was anything wrong with what we did in the past, it's just it's... anything wrong with what we did in the past, it's just this is something different and, you know, there's only, I guess, there's a certain demographic willing to go to a concert where, where you got fishing tournaments and you got movie night and you got concerts, you know, et cetera, you just have more, more things that will, you know, hopefully be of interest to more people. So I think this is great and, you know, we'll see how it works. I tell you, movie night, I'd never seen that movie before and it was, you know, it was kind of a cool night, I was dressed for it fortunately.
Cool might be generous.
And I really enjoyed it, I thought it went well and, you know, considering it was a cool night, a threat of rain, I'm surprised as many people were there that were there. And I just thought that was real successful and I really enjoyed it.
Great.
That movie, wonderful story, American underdog, so...
It's more of a love story than a football story.
Well, and very faith-based from my perspective and just a great family movie, so, yeah. And good point on the demographic of nothing wrong in the past, but that's to your point, being able to, you know, Union Township has such a wide range of demographics and ability to be able to, one, showcase the government's here to represent every single person, so thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the new business. So the first item on here is the approval of payments and just kind of explaining what we do to the public here is, those approval payments are for items less than $10,000 for our fiscal officer, down the list a little bit, then we have approval purchase orders, so that's $10,000 and up, that because of the dollar amount, we just bring it to the public's attention. And I think there is a dollar amount where actually required to do that, but something much greater than 10,000, so it's really just for the sake of, you know, openness and transparency. So I will move to approve the payment.
So moved.
Second.
Also, as you referenced that, it's 50,000 currently in the, but there, I believe it's going into the state budget to have an increase to, if anyone knows, say 75,000, 90,000? It's a, it's a significant, but it goes in line with the fact of inflation and services that are, but...
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, but anyway, end of discussion.
Okay, Mr. Campbell, take your role, please.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on the list is the approval of the, I move to approve, the monthly financial report.
Second.
Ms. Campbell, take your role, please.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then next on the list, we have the purchase orders for $10,000. Ms. Ayers, would you like to discuss those?
Thank you, sir. First on the list is TQL for Economic Development Agreement, March 2023 reimbursement in the amount of $91,963.86. Rosie Incorporated for the End of Summer Fireworks, the amount of $30,000. And the second for TQL for Economic Development Agreement, April 2023 reimbursement, $25,866.89. ITC Technology Team Incorporated for Annual License and Support for the Alert Software, $39,960.54. And finally Motorola Solutions Incorporated Dispatch Console Service Agreement Payment, amount of $31,675.1.
Great, so I will move to approve those requisitions.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, well, hang on, discussion. Mr. Logan, any comments?
None for me.
Or questions? Well, I do. For Chief Reese, there's two items on here, the annual license and support for the alert software, you know, round numbers $40,000, and then the dispatch console service agreement around numbers $32,000. Briefly, what are those and why do you need them and what do they do?
Well, those are both licensing and maintenance agreements. So first off with the alerts and teltech bill, that's our computer-aided dispatch, what we call CAAT, so it helps the dispatchers go through their protocols when they're answering dispatch calls. It also covers our Sentinel Mobile Computer Software, which is the mobile piece that's in all our cruisers, so we can have paperless reporting. And then finally, our records management system, our RMS system. As you can imagine, we've got a lot of information on these reports that we're processing and we're holding on to, master names, reports, and that bill just basically provides maintenance and licensing for all those programs throughout the year.
Very good, thank you very much.
I might add on that too, we, last year, we signed a five-year contract with alerts and we're saving about $18,000 by signing that contract and maintaining that every five years.
I like the sound of that.
The second one you asked about, Mr. Becker, is the Motorola Mobile Comm Bill, that's the annual maintenance and licensing on our, all our dispatch and radio consoles and our towers. We have several towers throughout the township that help us carry our dispatch signal and again, that's maintenance and upkeep on those.
All right, thank you. Ms. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next on the list, Board of Zoning Appeals Appointments, I have trouble reading that a little bit. Ms. Ayers, what, explain to us what's going on with that.
Yes, sir. Since the last meeting, we received communication from Thomas Hanrahan, who had previously appointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals, that he has moved out of the Union Township area and was therefore resigning his position. Mr. McCormick worked diligently, spoke with our current alternate members as well as our most recent applicants, and we're recommending Robert McAdams be appointed to replace Mr. Hanrahan as a full member. Mr. McAdams was previously an alternate member. And then Jamie Briskel, I believe it's pronounced, asking, was previously the applicant not chosen, asking they be appointed as an alternate for the remaining term of Mr. McAdams.
Okay, so we need motions to approve those?
Yes, you could do them together though, if you would like in one motion.
All right, in that case, I will move to appoint Mr. McAdams to be a full member and for Jamie Briskel to be the alternate member.
Second.
Any discussion?
Happy to have Mr. McAdams there full-time and happy to have Mr. Briskel as the alternate. And I just want to again say, you know, thanks to the staff who really advertised these positions earlier at the beginning of the year to get an excellent pool of candidates that were interested to serve in this capacity. This was the first time that I've seen a bench basically of applicants waiting to be able to serve their community, so I thought that was great not to have vacancies and not to have, in this case, be able to have a bench where someone, someone can come on full-time and someone can go on to the alternate side, so thanks to the staff on executing on that, thank you.
Yeah, I concur with Mr. Logan and to add to that, you know, we don't have people knocking, you know, busting down the door in the community to get on any, any of these boards. So if anybody's interested serving on, on any of our boards, let us know, because, you know, we don't have a long list of people in, you know, on the bench waiting to step up.
Mr. Campbell?
I'd like to make a comment if I could.
Yes.
Mr. Hanrahan has been served on this board for 30 years.
Wow.
And he's done an outstanding job, I think, with, you know, we should mention that tonight, I mean, that's a lot of dedication, he done, I mean, he had been on some, some pretty high-profile cases and he always done a good job. He was always a good advocate for the, for the township, so I think as a board, we should, we should thank him for all his dedicated service.
Indeed, thank you for that, I was not aware of that.
Yeah, I remember the first time I spoke with him and ran into him at Bob Evans and saw his passion for, for serving the community and, Mr. Campbell, thanks for raising that, that awareness too, and I know he moved out of the township, I don't wanna reveal his private information, I don't know how far he moved away out of the township, but, I mean, perhaps the board, when the board is formed, when the board is all together, perhaps we could invite him for a, you know, proclamation and be able to appreciate him for his time.
Absolutely.
All right, Ms. Campbell, take your role, please.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Item F, Approval Resolution. So the first resolution, 2023-16, has to do with the sale of equipment. Ms. Ayers, what's going on there?
Thank you. Asking for approval for disposal of what we're considering obsolete equipment, a 2007 Ford Explorer. We received a request from the Fayetteville Fire Department if we would consider selling that car for a dollar for the use by their department, where they're lacking some financial resources. The car is significantly over miles for what we would consider valid for use and I believe has some significant mechanical issues that we've deemed it obsolete for purposes of our service. It was a staff car and that's how we've been utilizing it and asking if the board would approve transfer to the Fayetteville Fire Department for their use.
Great, okay, I will move to approve Resolution 2023-16.
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
I have a question, so, you know, I'm fine with this, I guess my question is, how did we know Fayetteville needed one and how does Fayetteville know we had one and just how was that connection made?
Keep if you could address.
Obviously, you know, we, we have correspondence and we rerun mutual aid with all the departments around Union Township and a lot of the people, a lot of the firefighters that work on surrounding departments work on multiple departments, including departments out east of here in Brown County. In this particular case, it was somebody from a local neighboring fire department who also works, I should say works, volunteers as a firefighter with the Fayetteville Fire Department that knew that we were gonna get rid of those staff cars and they brought it to Fayetteville's attention and then I received correspondence from the chief of Fayetteville Fire Department saying, you know, we're really in need of something that we can go out and do daily inspections and go to training it because we really don't have anything for the volunteers to use and that's how that request came about.
Great, that's interesting, all right, thank you. All right, Ms. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution 2023-17 has to do with the disposal of obsolete equipment. Ms. Ayers, what's happening there?
Thank you, sir. This is also vehicles in the fire department. We're the last vehicle we were asking to transfer to the Fayetteville Fire Department. This is one, two, three, four vehicles we're asking to dispose of via the City of Cincinnati Auction. Their municipal garage has an auction program that meets the state requirements for disposal of this equipment, so you'd be declaring these to be obsolete and disposable via the auction process. That is a 1992 Seagrave ladder truck, a 2006 Ford E450 ambulance, a second 2006 Ford E450 ambulance and a 2007 Ford Explorer used as a staff car that are no longer usable for the purposes of township business and we'd ask to dispose of them via municipal auction.
Okay, I will move to approve Resolution 2023-17.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have none.
I do not either. Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution 2023-18, then and now certificate for a payment to, what, World Connect slash Lykan's Oil. Ms. Ayers, what's happening there?
This is a housekeeping issue to help correct. We had some bills that came in late from World Connect Lykan's Oil and this allows us to process them despite their being approved previously.
All right, in that case, I will move to approve Resolution 2023-18.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have none.
I do not either. Ms. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Which brings us to board member comments. Mr. Logan, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, so just real brief, Chief Dialing, I talked to the resident recently who was very receptive and full of gratitude for the services the department provided when they had some smoke damage from a small fire in their, in their, their home and said how you personally came out and you personally came back out and offered to, to be there when the insurance inspector would come through and just wanna let you know how, you know, hearing that, you know, I already know how great of a fire chief you are, but just made me feel very, very good on behalf of the residents, so, so I wanna say thank you for that type of dedication that you always, always have, so, so just wanted to highlight that, so thank you.
You're welcome.
We've got, I know this is on the upcoming events, you're gonna, you're gonna mention it, but I'm just, I'm gonna mention it, May 29th, Memorial Day, honoring, remembering those that have, have not had the privilege of living today and, and served their countries and, you know, to me, it's personal. I served a lot of great Marines in Iraq, were one of the most combat engaged units in the Iraq War, where 184 Marines deployed and 23 were killed and we had 53 Purple Hearts out of that 184 in a seven-month period. So I always think of the families and I mean that when I say to, you know, fire and police, even our public works, you know, you guys do so much for our communities, it means so much to me. The families serve and I, to me, that comes from my foundation of serving overseas in combat and knowing what that's like for family members that are back home, but they're giving up their time to their loved ones and, you know, being able to hug a Gold Star Mother, it's, that's a, that's something that's a memory that stays with you, but that transfers, like I say, when I say thank you to our public works, all of our staff, our police and our fire, that's, that's where that comes from, because I know your, your employees, they give up time away from their families and we need them, we need them around the clock when it's snow, rain, hail, you know, when it's the warm spring and summer and when it's barbecue and fires or whatever it may be, we need you, so, so thank you. Lastly, do, what do I call you, do I call you vice chairman tonight, do I call you chairman? What's, what's the proper?
That's a great question and I, and I, well, this came up when we would have like House Speakers, you know, you got the speaker, but then you got somebody who's, you know, stepping in to be speaker for, you know, temporary or whatever, while that person is acting as speaker, he is the speaker.
Yeah.
At least that's the way I remember it, so yes, I am the chairman.
Chairman.
Until Mr. Dills comes back to restore order next month.
Restore, restore, restore the board to order. No, I think you did a phenomenal job tonight, so thank you.
Thank you.
Really well done, really well, I, you know, you have your experience that it's always an honor to be able to see your, see your perspective and learn from you and I try to always be open to those learning lessons and be, receive mentorship, so I appreciate your ability stepping in tonight and just doing wonderful, I thought, for the township, so I appreciate it.
You're too kind.
Happy to be able to, blessed to be able to serve with a staff and board members like yourself, so thank you. That's, that's all my comments I have for this evening.
All right, you know, I really, you know, I, I'm pretty vocal about making comments all the way through a meeting, so by the time it gets to the end of the meeting, it's like, well, everything I wanted to say I've already said, so it's actually true tonight as well, but I can tell you, and along those lines, I was sitting here thinking that, you know, being chairman of this meeting for now just a little over an hour is, I've learned to appreciate even more Chairman Dills for the past five months and Chairman Logan prior to that from last, last year.
Thank you.
Number of things to schedule, keep track of and it's easy to kind of mess up on something here and there as you see me do already. So with that, let's move on to upcoming events. Most of this, I think, has already been discussed, I don't wanna read them off anyway. Parks and Recreation Committee will meet May 10th at 6:00 PM at the Civic Center. Free Family Fishing Tournament, May 20th, 9:00 AM at Klepper Park. Blue Water Kings Band Concert at the amphitheater here behind the Civic Center, May 27th, that's a what, 70s, 80s band?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a kind of a soft, light rock or old rock, classic rock? We'll find out.
I totally lost my ability to tag those, I would say adult rock.
Adult rock? Okay, let's see, non-emergencies, so we talk about Memorial Day will be closed, appreciate your, your comments on that. Board of Trustees, next meeting will be, well, I guess the regular trustees meeting will be June 13th at 6 o'clock. The, we're still gonna probably have a special meeting prior to that to hear the two zoning cases?
We're working on a date, but we will announce that, I'm not sure whether it's gonna be prior or just after.
Okay, okay, so it'll be sometime in June, so we potentially could have three meetings in June?
Potentially.
Okay, well, we'll be earning our money.
It's a good thing of having lots of business going on.
Well, hey, thanks for adding that point, I was gonna say, that's, that's one of those things where it becomes very cyclical, right? And that's, that's driven off the fact that there's more public hearings, but that's, that's the time of the year where business starts to break ground and get permits in and come through zoning, so.
Okay.
We're excited about the business.
Yeah, it's a good problem to have.
Exactly.
With that, just like to thank everybody for coming this evening and I will move to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes, you moved, second, sir.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
We're adjourned at 7:06 PM, thank you.
All right.